I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome you to December 2019 meeting, city council meeting, and in our budget presentation. If anybody's here to question the budget, so we'll do a roll call here.
Mayor Pelon.
Present.
Councilmember Bryan.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Here.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
Also present, City Planner Stockman and Commander Wayne Heath of the Anoka County Sheriff's Department.
We have an agenda as printed or amended, and we'll follow that agenda so that we cover all the actions the council needs to address. We need any amendments, that's my proper motion discussion items. Business from the floor is welcome, there's a lot of foreign agenda on the agenda. Any comments from the floor be recognized first by the mayor, state your name and address for our records, and then we have three minutes to state your comments or concerns. We do have copies of the agenda and a handout on the back table. If you haven't signed in, please make sure you sign in in the back, and please silence your cell phones if you haven't.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
If there are no changes to the agenda, I move it as presented.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would like to move item D down to council items, under consent agenda, consent agenda, item D to council item, and as it has been addressed last meeting, remove item E from consent agenda.
Has that been addressed?
Yeah.
Because it's within the budget?
Yep.
Okay.
I talked to Lori about that, we're all, she's good, I'm good, unless anybody else wants to discuss.
And if I could make it, the item D, the voluntary cost sharing, we can make it on the council items C and move fire department to D, so we'll use the fire department last. All right, anything else? Seeing and hearing none, all those in, do we have a second, by the way? So you have a motion as amended, Mayor?
Second.
Approve the amendment.
All right, we have a motion as amended, and we have a second, anything else? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Commander Heath. I wish you would have worn your outfit there, that would have made it even more festive.
That was a one night appearance.
I saw videos of Ramsey's council meetings in December, and their council, I saw where Santa had, so I didn't think about it.
For those that didn't see, I played Santa Claus for our office that Christmas Eve. We do a thing for our employees every year where they bring their children, I got to be Santa Claus, he's here, so, I'd love to do it. I think okay, but there were crying children growing up, but I've been present at enough of those, I think that's kind of Santa Claus.
Lori.
Well, good evening, everyone. I wanted to give the calls for service for November of 2019, and I wanted to bring something up, I don't know if the council recalls, a couple of months ago I brought up that I had seen an anomaly in our calls for service of a category of unknown, and it gets added to our calls for service for the city, but there was no breakdown for what it was, and I contacted our communications, center communications of Anoka County, and they didn't, through some investigation, what it was found out is, when somebody calls 911, they're categorizing the call, like if somebody calls and wants to know the number for City Hall. What they're doing is they're creating an event for record-keeping purposes for the communications center, because it was an event that happened in Now Then that communications is handling. What they didn't know is that it was also causing the calls for service in the city to increase. So what I, I worked with the supervisors there and the director to have them remove that from our account for calls for service. So if you remember, all of a sudden this year we started seeing a spike in calls for service, and my opinion is that was what was causing it. There could have been a smaller increase than from what the normal calls had been, but they're, they've now got that isolated and they're going to remove it for future. They're still going to do their record-keeping thing, but it won't affect what the city sees for as its calls for service. And those were never calls that were dispatched to a deputy or someone to handle, but it was, they considered it an event in the city and that's why they were logging it. So that will be something that in 2020 we won't see, so I feel a little bit bad because earlier this year you asked me, can we now count on the calls for service as being accurate? And I told you, yes. I don't want to say that they're accurate, but that unknown column we have to treat as kind of an outlier, if that makes sense.
So with that, now that we know the unknown is not calls for deputies, or dispatched deputies, will that be adjusted for our records this year going forward? I would speculate that's going to be part of our basis for next year's contract.
And the problem that they're seeing is, there are unknown calls for service, there are unknown, there's a specific call type for that, and they're having difficulty separating what would have been one of these actual calls and what would have been just the call that they need, they kept for record-keeping. What I would tell you is if all of a sudden, when we go to look at the future contracts, if there's a significant increase, that my conversation with our office and the sheriff and chief deputy would be that we have this year to consider that we should probably look at a close year previous versus this one to use to set that contract.
Or as a motivation for them to get it figured out, concede all the unknowns this year, and then get it right next year. And then get them separated, I guess.
Yeah, and so the best thing is, we've got them isolated, so we shouldn't have to worry about it moving forward. I will monitor it to make sure I don't, make sure they got their fix right, but come contract time, if all of a sudden we see this huge increase in calls for service for Now Then, my stance would be in conversations, then I would ask our staff to go back and separate those unknown calls out before we calculate the true calls for service, and then go from that route. But I, we've had a relationship long enough, you're not going to see the sheriff's office all of a sudden try to change things and pull one over on the council, because I'm the one that brought the, I'm the one that brought the issue up, so you guys were aware of it. So I'm not going to change that stance as we move forward. So, I know it's inconvenient.
We understand our relationships.
Yeah, and it's not a, it's not a fun thing, and I really hate standing up here and even having this conversation, because it's no fun, but I wanted to make sure you guys were all aware and had accurate information, so.
Thank you for that.
Oh, absolutely. And with that, just a couple of things I wanted to bring up, I had spoken with the mayor, and just for the rest of the council's information, things have not, I wouldn't say improved at bar none, we're still having, the calls for service have, didn't spike and get to a crazy number, but just to kind of give you a glimpse of some of the things that we're seeing, we had deputies there on a damage to property incident, they cleared the scene, you know, they had dealt with the issue that was there, they cleared the scene, and nine minutes later got called back to deal with the same individual that had been causing problems to begin with. There wasn't enough for them to take any other action while they were there, but nine minutes later, something transpired that now, and they ended up transporting that individual. So, to me, outside looking in, that looks like something there isn't working right, either that's a client that shouldn't be there because of the level of service they can get, or something isn't jiving there that they can handle what's going on with the people that they have there.
When you say they transported, who transported?
Actually, an ambulance was called and they were transported to a medical facility for evaluation. So, I just bring it up so it stays in your mind that things, things are still kind of the status quo, what I've been talking about in the past month. And I just wanted to, brought up a few calls that I was looking at that intrigued me, you know, I talk about sometimes, all of the good, there's a lot, a ton of good things here, but one of the things I appreciate is when we have staff that are out really looking for people that are kind of up to no good. As a police officer, I appreciate when we're, you know, we have good positive contacts with a ton of people, but then I appreciate when we're out there, I've always, I always felt that my role as a police officer in a community was to try to protect those that couldn't protect themselves, or didn't know they needed to protect themselves, if that makes sense. And I just pulled up a couple of calls that I, I was, they're not great because of the activity, but I like the fact that our deputies were watching and looking for these type of things. You know, one of them, a deputy was on routine patrol right here in the 19500 block in Now Then Boulevard, and observed a male that he had previous contacts with, they're passing each other, this is at like eight in the morning, they're passing each other on Now Then Boulevard, and he knew that the drivers didn't have a license. And he ultimately was able to stop the male, who was from out of town, 29 years old, doing some investigating, and the subject also had a felony warrant from Washington County for receiving stolen property. And in my experience, people that have warrants for charges like that, that's not a, that's somebody that's generally involved in the theft business, or burglaries, or something like that. And while it's not great that they were here, I was pleased to see that a deputy was watching for people that are maybe up to no good, and found one that he had had previous contacts with in a different area of the county, which is interesting, but then saw him here and was able to follow through, and the gentleman ultimately had some warrants for his arrest. Arrested him without incident and jailed him, and there was no issues.
We appreciate that type of attention, to be driving by and recognize somebody in that way.
Yeah, and it is a skill, I can tell you from my past experience, it's not something that happens easy, you have to, it has to be very intentional for you to be looking for things that are out of place, or people that, people of that nature, or people of that makeup that are out causing issues, you have to consciously be looking for it.
I have trouble recognizing my neighbors when I walk in.
Yeah, true.
And then actually about three hours later, the same deputy was back here in town, and was on Viking Boulevard just west of Now Then Boulevard, and passed another vehicle, and recognized that driver from previous contacts as having a suspended driver's license. He knew where that party lived, and there's some traffic got, reading the report, some traffic got between the deputy and the vehicle he had seen this driver in, and ultimately he turned down a side road, and the deputy watched him pull into a residence here in Now Then. Well, the deputy knew he didn't live there, and actually stopped and got out and talked to him, and the gentleman didn't have his license, and the deputy knew from a previous incident that this gentleman had a habit of throwing narcotics out of the vehicle when he saw law enforcement. So the deputy started walking backwards from where he had found this vehicle and found a bag containing 14 grams of methamphetamine along the side of the road. And one of the nice things is, he had had his camera on, and he could go back, he never saw the gentleman throw the drugs out of the vehicle, but he was able to use his squad camera to see that the drugs hadn't been there before the vehicle passed, if that makes sense, he had been there before. So he arrested him, they'll do some testing at the lab, so the gentleman was jailed for possession of methamphetamine, and also for the driving violations. So, again, and his story made no sense, he said he was on his way home, and he lives way over in kind of northeast Oak Grove, and the path where he was taking would make no logical sense for anybody to be on their way home with, and then pulling into the residence who had no idea who this guy was. So, just, it's, to me, it's nice, I like to point those things out to the council, so you, yeah, people here, our folks care about the community, and are out here trying to keep, keep things as positive as possible.
So in a case like that, it's an Oak Grove resident, they're driving to Now Then, and they get stopped here and arrested here, is that a case we prosecute then?
Yes.
Because it's where they're arrested?
Yep, where the offense occurred. Even if the arrest occurred, say if he traveled outside of Now Then and ended up in Oak Grove, but we could, where the initial offense occurred is where that would likely be prosecuted. And then another one, another incident, a deputy was, and this was at about 10 o'clock, driving by the.
By the way, Commander, to interrupt you there, but could you just extend our gratitude to that officer?
Certainly.
Good day, and we appreciate his attentiveness in both those cases.
Yes, I will. And then another one, in an evening time, there was a deputy on patrol, and he saw a vehicle parked in front of the recycling center at 10 o'clock in the evening, and he wrote right in his report, I know that the recycling center closes at nine, so he went and sat down the road and just did some paperwork and watched the vehicle, and it sat there for an hour. So he finally just drove up to it, and there was a male there, who, you know, the deputy asked him, what are you doing, what are you doing here? Dropping off some plastic. Well, he wasn't a resident of the city, and he didn't have a driver's license, and had a warrant from Hennepin County and a warrant from Anoka County for different things. Ultimately was arrested on those warrants without incident, but when they were searching the vehicle after the arrest, it was loaded with tools that we normally see as theft or burglary tools, people that are engaged in going out into the community and using these tools to break into people's houses or cars or things like that. So, again, it's not good that the, that those folks find their way here, but I was very, again, pleased that you have, you know, first of all, our deputy knew that the recycling center closed at nine, and then sat around long enough, well, this just doesn't make sense, why would somebody, they're already here at 10, the lights are shut off on the vehicle, it's not like somebody just stopped really quick to drop something off, and just took the initiative to hang out and wait and see what this could produce, and here you have somebody that in their past has been up to no good, and likely was set up to do some other no good, as it seems. So, yeah, just, again, those are things I like to point out to the council, so. So if you get questions from the citizens about what we do, and, well, I only ever see him on traffic stops, or I only ever see him doing this, you know, now there's a reason for traffic stops, and we do more than just that, we're out here looking to see what's.
See him, just go hang out by the recycling center after hours.
Exactly.
Don't be carrying anything.
So, and again, I don't bring it up so that, this isn't, anytime I bring up calls like this and incidents, it's not so you guys think that you have some troubled city, that you need more and more police, it's just to highlight that I think you need to know that if you get questions from the citizens, we are a part of the community, we know, we tend to know what's right and what isn't quite so right here, and we take a vested interest in it.
Well, and we also know from our prosecution submittals that we get, we know how busy we are in Now Then, things that, again, most people at that time are home in bed, are home comfortably, and not out when you guys running into this stuff, so.
Right.
But we appreciate it, it's been a good partnership, so.
Absolutely, and it's a, and it's not, I also don't want anybody to think, we're not out here targeting people, you know, there's a lot of people that get stopped by deputies, and it's a two-minute contact of, hey, you forgot to signal your turn, or hey, your headlights burnt out, or, you know, those, not all of the contacts that we make with people are bad, so. I guess just on that, I'd like to convey on behalf of Sheriff Stewart, happy holidays to the council and their families, and ask if anybody has any questions.
And us back to the department and the sheriff, wishing the best from us, and a good New Year's.
I will, and he's actually in Israel as we speak, on a work trip, so, very interesting place to be this time of year.
Yeah, any time of year, but right now, yeah. Council have anything for the commander?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just want to thank Commander Heath for the follow-up on the unknown calls, because that was kind of disturbing, it's like, where are these calls coming from? You could see small numbers in other categories, but, so thanks for the follow-up on that. The only other thing I have is comments I've seen about vehicles following the UPS truck, the Amazon truck, the post office truck, because of the holiday deliveries, and I'm assuming that deputies are watching that too, and.
Yes, and as much as we can, guiding people to find alternative methods to get things shipped to them, you know, if you have a friend that's home all day, have it shipped to them so it's not sitting on your porch or on, by your front door, but it is a problem. Luckily, we haven't seen an upswing here, but it has in other areas.
I think our, we're fortunate, now we've got the long driveways, a lot of times you can't even see the homes, so it's, it's not as easy of a mark to, it's not as quick in and out. There was a post this morning that somebody had a U-Haul vehicle in their driveway when they woke up this morning, and they hadn't rented it, and so I'm kind of worried about that, but.
Yeah.
And they check what they're supposed, and see if they rented it.
Yeah, no, I didn't go that far into it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we pull the, see if there's four items? I would like to express our thanks to the Lions for our decorations outside, for the tree lighting, it looks very nice, it looks like an awful lot of work this year, like the extra trees that we done. So formally, if you could bring that back to the Lions, we appreciate, it looks very nice, and we appreciate the hard work.
I will do that.
And thank them very much for us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I already have it.
You got it? Where is it?
You want me to go, you need a piece of paper?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'll get it.
We have one floor item, Mr. Andy Schrader. To the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to address you regarding the city's building official services. To start, I want to say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve the residents of Now Then, the business owners, as well as the contractors. I started my career as a code official in Ramsey in 2003, now I own and operate Rum River Construction Consultants. You approved my first contract, right here at a special meeting in 2017. Now, in less than three years, we are servicing 12 contracts in Wright, Anoka, Isanti, Hennepin, and Pine Counties. Our office is based in St. Francis, we include seven fully licensed inspectors, four administrative personnel, as well as myself. We administer permits and inspections for building, plumbing, mechanical, septic, as well as fire. I brought several unsolicited letters of recommendation and appreciation from city administration, residents, Anoka County Assessor's Office, as well as building contractors. Please note, these were written without our request, and well before last week's revelations. I left copies on the back table. These letters of affirmation, along with the complimentary letter received from Now Then staff last week, do not align with the decision to cancel my contract. I've been the Now Then building official since 2012, and worked to improve services from all aspects, gaining efficiency and effectiveness of permit processing and site inspections. When this relationship began, all permit processing and record retention was done by paper and pencil. Today, all permit applications, construction documents are received, processed, and archived electronically. This saves residents and staff considerable time and countless dollars. This transition over the years has been hard work, but it was a shared effort with city staff, and we are fortunate to be part of that process. Inspection availability is an extremely important part of customer service, as northern Anoka County here is essentially a bedroom community, many residents commute for work. It is this reason that we found it beneficial to offer inspections starting at 7:00 a.m. This allows many to maintain their regular work schedule. Another example of how we've been able to respond to the needs of the community is dealing with this year's frequent rains. Saturday inspections were added, at no additional cost or consideration. This action has been received extremely well, especially by the contractors, as they are constantly at the mercy of Mother Nature. This is what was needed, and this is what was done. Councilmember Rainville recently suggested providing a packet of information for new residents to the community as it relates to zoning issues. This timing is ironic, as we recently implemented a system of providing an information pack to new owners regarding their onsite septic systems. We've found many times that families come from an area where wastewater treatment is provided by the municipality, and they're unfamiliar with the demands of owning an onsite system. This packet is generated by the University of Minnesota, and customized by Rum River staff, at no cost to the city of Now Then. Additionally, our company provides state-approved continuing education for licensed contractors. Approximately 10 years ago, I was approved as an instructor by the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry. Building code requirements can be a complex subject at times, that's why we strive to not only explain what's required, but why. Last Wednesday, City Clerk Lori Strike informed me that our contract is about to be terminated. I was not aware you were displeased with our services, I'm disappointed we were not able to take part in this process. I have reviewed the posted city council minutes and agendas that appear on the website. For the last six months, I have not found any reference to the fact that you were dissatisfied with our services. Our staff will work for a successful conclusion to as many of these projects as possible, if necessary. It is not fair for the residents to have someone completely unfamiliar with their project take over this process. On December 5th, I sent an email to all of you asking for some insight to this decision. Just today, I spoke with Mayor Pelon by phone, and that's why I'm physically here tonight, in search of a reason for this potential change in processes. I feel obligated to inquire as to this decision, it effectively terminates productive working relationships I have established over the last number of years. This appears to be a breakdown in communication. I have appreciated a chance to serve you and the residents of Now Then.
Thank you.
I'll be here for the balance of the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
We have a second.
I second it.
Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, for the record, no one here to speak on the budget issues. This is a time for truth in taxation, residents are able to comment on their proposed taxes they would have received last month, prior to our adoption, unless anybody on the council wants to speak to their taxes, we'll say that nobody's here for the truth in taxation. Everybody's been given a copy of our budget, the packet, the budget levy.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Point of inquiry, does the public hearing need to be open and closed, or not?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-81, adopting the budget for the year 2020, as well as Resolution 2019-82, resolution adopting the levy for the year 2019, collectible in 2020. as well as Resolution 2019-82, a resolution adopting the levy for the year 2019 collectible in 2020.
Second to that motion on those two resolutions.
Second.
All right, have motion and second, any discussion on either of those resolutions, the budget or the levy?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rayman.
I did bring up to our city clerk who then forwarded my comments up in regards to the salaries and benefits. They have a 3% wage increase, and per the city clerk, that is for COLA. And my question would be if we... Does the council still have to approve that COLA? Or is this just a placeholder in the budget? And if that... If we don't have to approve it, and this just gives them a 3% COLA increase, then how do we deal with any potential increases in employees' salaries based on their performance reviews? Because we haven't budgeted for that. When I saw that 3%, I assumed that was that. And because I don't, and I could be very wrong, but I don't remember any discussion about COLA.
Mayor and council members, the COLA is a straight 3% for all employees. It's the cost of living increase. And any further reviews and wage increases would come back to council for approval.
So, is this an automatic then? Is that what I'm...
If it's approved within our budget, yes. Everyone would receive their cost of living increase.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of adopting the budget and the levy for 2020? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Code enforcement.
Mayor and members of the council, last month, I prepared a memo for some guidance on code enforcement. My first concern was how we can better educate our residents on the code enforcement issues. And then also my concerns about how our city is viewed from the public streets. Currently, we are on a complaint-based system. If that's the way you want to stay, I totally respect that. I only bring it up to make you aware of what I see out there, and then you can make your decisions based on that. So, before you, you've got the summary of all the code enforcement actions since January of this year. We have had 17 complaints, new complaints this year. And all have been resolved except for five of those. Two are fairly new, so they haven't even received a notice yet. So, really, just three that haven't... Three out of 15 that haven't been addressed. So, as we suspected just by conversation last month, we are able to resolve a lot of those day-to-day kind of complaints. A lot of outdoor storage issues and people that voluntarily complied. A couple were related to, you know, obtaining an IEP for a business and those kinds of things. Couple of dog issues, one which was handled by the prosecuting attorney. And very successfully, I might add, that was a kind of a sticky situation with a resident who was harassing people walking on the public road. So, good to see that that was resolved. And trying to make contact in several cases on some of our longer standing issues. I guess, not sure how you want to address some of these items that have been on our code enforcement list for years and years. It is difficult. In two or three of the cases, I can, you know, say or would have a concern as far as citing people continuously. I mean, we don't want someone to be assessed such a large amount, you know, that they lose their home or that, you know, it's a financial burden. So, again, to repeat, I mean, it's never the intent of a code enforcement program to cite somebody for on-terrory gain or any other. It is strictly just used only when necessary for to kind of spur peoples into action. And always, always, if someone does happen to be cited and they come into compliance, then the city would, at a very minimum, either waive that citation or just take what they need to cover expenses.
I would like to recommend, as the council's consideration. Obviously, we're two weeks today from Christmas Eve. Probably issuing any more citations this year would not be a good Christmas present. What I would like to do is schedule a workshop for after the first of the year. We can take a look at the specifics on this list. I'm seeing last contact on some of these in 2016. We could take a look at refreshingness and then decide how we want contracted versus in-house staff to address the steps, the letters versus the... And we've already made it clear, we don't want the office staff going out and visiting the sites. But they certainly can, with Lori's involvement here, decide how much of the letters and follow-up, the tracking of the spreadsheet, that type of thing. So, I think if we get a workshop together and iron out the details, and then we'll have a good way forward. We can clean up some of the past and decide how we're going to handle them.
Okay, perfect.
But as far as I know, the council still desires to go with complaint driven, unless I hear otherwise.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'd like to, yeah, I think this is potentially a longer discussion than at a regular council meeting, so it's probably worth... I can see value in putting another meeting together and ironing it out.
So, with that, I move that we take up this issue in a workshop in January. Work with Clerk Trezor to set that up and decide how we want to go forward with her staffs.
Mr. Mayor, when you're talking about a workshop, are you talking about the meeting before the meeting? Like workshops that you had before, where you meet before the actual 7:00 meeting?
Probably, probably a separate evening.
Okay.
Just because, depending on generally, January is a fairly packed meeting. And it comes, you know, it's going to be the second week of January. This gives us some flexibility to fit it into a schedule and not try and get it...
Okay.
Because there's a lot of year-end stuff in the office that needs to be done as well. So, it needs to fit in with the clerk's schedule.
Fine. I just was curious.
Taxes and anything else.
Because I know in the past, there have been workshops, and I was wondering if this is what you were thinking about.
I think one of the things we'll do, you know, based on our conversation when Pam Whitmore was here, we'll be talking about for this coming year, what type of workshop might fit as prior to a meeting and what's really a little more long, a longer discussion than we would have a separate workshop.
Okay.
If it's possible, we dedicate an evening, there might be two things we could fit into a workshop or something. But I would see this because it takes a little... We're restructuring here a bit, it would take a little longer.
Sure, perfect.
Is that all right with the council?
Yes.
All right. All right, Upper Rum River Watershed Management Organization. So, we're looking for a technical advisory committee member.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Part of the watershed process for projects is that they plan on having those technical advisory committee meetings. And, you know, they're looking for someone to represent Now Then. There's potentially, there's a couple of different tasks on this. One could be, we could, you know, I would be willing to sit in meetings and bring information back, but at times, there's going to be potentially engineering or city questions about things that need to be done. For example, there's information where they're talking about some sort of culvert inventory, and that's coming down from that council. And so, it'd be a matter of, you know, how to get that information back. And so, they're looking for who would be representing Now Then. So, it might be something where if I did it and if something else came up, I could work with Lori and we could address that way. Or, you know, I'm not sure if, you know, it'd be a... Something that we want to potentially investigate all the time of Shane's time or Joe's time, but that's just one way to look at it. You know, right now, for, at least for 2019, and Councilmember Greenberg can agree, there's no potential plans planned for Now Then at this time. So, it might just be, let's play it by ear and adjust as needed, so.
Yeah, obviously, if it's a culvert inventory or some such thing, we'd have to work with staff to... I agree, I wouldn't want to have Joe sit there for all the things that wouldn't apply to him. And Lori, you have a lot of time, don't you? So, if the council would be amenable to Councilmember Brian taking that role to begin with and communicating accordingly to needs, as there isn't anything pressing in Now Then, we could get a taste of what's going on in other communities and see what type of commitment we would need in the future. I agree, having the engineering staff do it and not have anything applied to Now Then would be quite investment, so. Any other comments on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I think Councilmember Brian would be a great person to fit this role. Very knowledgeable with working with them. I looked at the other people that were appointed and the titles behind their names, and I felt underqualified.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, do we need a motion for that, or that's just directions?
I would...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Plake.
How frequently do you have to attend those meetings?
Four to five times over eight months.
Wow. That's a big commitment, isn't it?
I think we could formalize it with a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raindell.
I move that we appoint Councilmember Dan Bryan to be our liaison for the Technical Advisory Committee for the Upper Rum River Watershed Management Organization, and that he be given the ability to work with our city clerk when and if there is a need for other representatives to attend, whether it be our city clerk, our engineer, or our maintenance supervisor.
And to clarify, the eager work with the clerk would not have to bring that back to the council if he needs to bring in...
Correct.
Other technical, okay? Have a motion? We have a second.
I second it.
We have a motion in two seconds?
Two seconds. It's a really second at this time.
We got that one nailed.
We're so proud of him. Forty-five meetings in eight months, wow.
Four to five.
Oh, I thought you said forty-five. I thought, whoa! That's a full-time job.
You changed your mind.
No, 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 I wanted to hear four to five.
Sorry, four dash five.
I thought you said forty-five. Let's clarify that for the camera, too.
Four to five.
Okay.
Here we have the money. All right, we have a motion in two seconds, any other discussion? Hearing and hearing, got all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raindell.
The next item was brought forward by me, and it pertains to city council salary. As some history, prior to January of 2017, the city council, as I believe approved by the town board, was to be provided or paid a predetermined amount of money for attendance at meetings. And it was city council meetings, workshops, quarterly League of Minnesota City, or excuse me, local government officials meetings and League of Minnesota City meetings. In January of '18, based on a vote in '17, the compensation structure was changed, which increased our monthly salary, but did not compensate members for attendance at other meetings. The increase was to compensate for that. One of the downfalls of that new policy was that you did not have to attend any meetings in order to obtain that $400 or $500 that was stipulated in the ordinance. I was not in favor of that at the time. I am still not in favor of that in that you are being paid for something you're not doing. So, I am bringing back a request for council action that we change our salary structure, which compensates members for attendance at meetings as follows. The regularly scheduled city council meeting, the mayor would stay at 500, city council at 400. Newly scheduled council meetings and/or workshops, the Fire Protection Council, Fire Board, the Fire Board, Upper Rum River Watershed, Local Government Officials, and League of Minnesota Cities meetings would be at $50, which is what they were prior and which was from the town board, so over 10 years ago. City meetings as a liaison to a committee would be $20, which is the same dollar amount that the committee members make in those meetings. There is no effect on the 2020 budget. As state statute dictates, you cannot... This would not take effect until 2021, because you can't change your existing... You can't change an existing council salary. So, this would take effect for anyone that is elected in the fall of '20 and take a office in January 2021. So, we would just have to, in the 2021 budget, meetings next fall, work that compensation in. So, my request is that the council adopt the salary structure which compensates members for attendance at meetings as follows. Again, it's regularly scheduled monthly city council, monthly city council meeting, the mayor 500, city council 400. Newly scheduled council meetings, workshops, Fire Protection Council, Fire Board, Upper Rum River Watershed, Local Government Officials, and League of Minnesota Cities meetings, $50. And city committee meetings as a liaison, $20.
Mayor and council members, can I make a recommendation? Our office was very busy this afternoon with calls on this. I would recommend that we put this aside and do, have a little more discussion on it, because there were a lot of questions coming in and not enough time to gather information to answer those questions. So, I would recommend that we maybe put this on hold until we can get a little bit more information out for this, because there was so much concern.
That was going to be my recommendation. I didn't know people were calling on it. But I would like to know the financial impact of that.
Yes.
And I would like to know more of myself. So, I would recommend, it's nice to bring it up. If we can table it until we have more information and financial impact, potential financial impact. I know it doesn't affect us till 2021, but I'd like to know that before proceeding with it. Did you make a motion, or...
I did make a motion. I was waiting for a second.
Okay. If we lack a second, we'll make a different motion.
Lack a second?
Lacking a second, we'll make a different motion. I would move that we table this until the staff is able to give us information from the questions that came in, and we can take a look at the potential impact based on history. If we were to use the attendance at these meetings, what would that cost the city in addition to the already stipends that their council received? So, I move that we table it until we have more information.
Second.
Motion to second, any other discussion?
I would, Mr. Mayor, I would just ask that for those people that are calling in is that they have the information. Because what I have seen that has been posted in regards to this is not complete information, so. And I would also ask that people have concerns about something that I have brought forward, that they are provided my number and they can contact me.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I would think something like this would have to have parameters around it for what what this entails, I mean entails, because what are we talking about here? How many people are going to attend each meeting and who's all going to get paid when they do attend it? I mean, there's a lot of questions with that.
Yeah, I think we can take a look historically and say, if this were in place, what would it have cost us? Who's been going to these types of meetings?
Right, but once you're.
Should all five members decide to go to a local government officials meeting, what does that cost?
And who's going to decide who goes to them?
Right.
I mean, after there's pay, maybe this whole thing will change, who knows? But and what's the responsibility? Once you start paying people to go to these meetings, what's the responsibility for those people when they go to the meeting, bringing back?
Yeah, and that was part of our discussion in the past.
That's an education.
If you're going to a meeting, getting paid.
If you get paid, you're responsible and to come back with some outline for the host.
At least feedback for the city.
That's right. So everyone gets a good input into what was all about, that you did go and you got paid for it.
And certainly, I commend members that have been attending these meetings with no pay.
Right, I do, too. And there's been a lot of volunteer.
But I agree, I think those are the types of questions that we'll want to have answered. I'm sure that's a lot of what came in, what are the parameters? And so no need to rush this. It's something that isn't going to be affected until the next council's elected anyways.
And I, Mr. Mayor, and I also think that if it's clear and we have clear communication with the people in our community, that this whole thing will go a lot more smoothly. And like Mary says, if there's questions and she's willing to field those, go for it.
All right. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Dan, you pulled out the item D out of the consent.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just thought it would be worth having the discussion regarding the cost sharing for the Nooka County Economic Development.
Yes.
And I wasn't able to find it. If I remember right, last year when this came up, there was some source of funding somewhere for it. I don't know if that's still in place. Are we getting benefits out of it? It's a couple hundred dollars. Do we want to participate? So I just felt that it was worth the discussion.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
If memory serves me correctly, the dollars that we used to pay for it last year came from our economic development fund, which is our dollars. And per communication from Lori, we've not attended any meetings. We've not had any participation at all in the last year.
We have met with Jacquel.
Right, she came out.
She came out for that meeting, yes.
Well, she's been out. In addition to that, and she does make phone contact on occasion.
All right, okay.
If there's somebody looking for something that she thinks might be appropriate to know then. We've also told her that we're not looking to be plain or Columbia Heights. And so she's limited more to horse farms and agricultural type things, but we are on her radar. In our, what is currently in our?
What are we paying?
Huh?
Mr. Mayor, what do we pay every?
$261. $261.
Oh.
Our EDA, we do have some funds in EDA.
$2,000, I think, Mr. Mayor. That's great.
So with that said, you know, Jacquel is keeping an eye out for things that we've told her would fit our community. She is staying in regular touch. We do get emails from her. And I do think since we do have EDA funds, it must be appropriate use of those EDA funds.
If that's what you choose.
I mean, it's economic, potential economic development, so I think that for 200, we are getting $260 worth, I think, of her time compared to other cities where she is spending more time but has more opportunities there.
What, Mr. Mayor, what is she doing for us that we, I mean, that's not a lot of money, so I'm not against it, but what exactly are we getting for our money?
What she does is she networks. She networks throughout the county and she is the hub for people that are looking to develop in an area. And so if she knows we have something in our industrial park that might fit what we're doing because it's, we've got larger land sizes than people in other parts of the county, she directs them out to us, try and hook them up with available opportunities here.
So in the past, we have had benefit from this?
She has contacted us. We have not actually had businesses that have settled here.
Okay.
But she's keeping an eye out for types of things that are agricultural nature in particular. If somebody's looking for a horse-related business or an animal-related business or something that needs larger lot sizes, she's been watching on our industrial areas on 47 there, people that need larger acreage for what they're doing and trying to play matchmaker. So she's keeping an eye out for opportunities that she then forwards to us. So it's, you know, are we going to see an immediate return? Maybe not, but all it would take is one decent business to come in here and the taxes would more than cover that expense.
Okay.
Mayor Stockton.
I was contacted twice by mail through email, asking, do you have a slate of the old ones? She gives me the crapper and whatever person's looking for.
Okay. So that there's some, so we're getting something for our money.
Right.
She's working.
Okay.
Which is right now, most of her time is in areas that are progressively developing. And she's watching for types of, she knows, she's come out, she knows what lands we have available and she's watching for us.
Mr. Mayor.
On that note, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-79, the voluntary cost sharing agreement for the Nooka County Economic Development in the sum of $261 with funds coming from the, out of the Nowland Economic Development Fund.
Seconded that.
Motion is second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I guess I would like, as a councilmember, to know when we are contacted by her, what the discussions are. So if she's sending emails on things, I would like to see those so I could be current on that.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last item on our list. You should have received a email letter this afternoon. You should have a hard copy in front of you. Our board's been meeting. Dan and I met last week. There was a vote taken and two for, two opposed, so we ended up in a tie. Ramsey proposed that we pay $160,207, I think it was?
Give or take.
Give or take. $160,000 for the coming year. They told us at that meeting that tonight they will vote, on their agenda is to vote to dissolve the JPA with the Ramsey Fire Department, which would start the clock on our two-year exit clause. They would like to do that and still have us pay 160-plus thousand dollars. Dan and I voted no. There are two councilmembers voted yes. It's now a stalemate. So there's clear indications from our discussions at those meetings that Ramsey wants out of the existing joint power agreement. And that's their decision today to start the dissolution of that. At the meeting, they gave some indication that they may want to talk with us about a new JPA. We have three other cities that are interested in talking with us about a fire JPA and we have firefighters that are interested in forming our own department. So we have options available to us. So in order to break this deadlock and not be subjected to $160,000 bill, I propose this letter that you see, upon council approval, would be sent to Kurt Ulrich, their administrator, who would then bring it in a workshop to their council and they would vote on it probably in January unless they have a special meeting. We would present it to the fire board next Tuesday at our fire board meeting, a special meeting we've called. So I think it breaks the deadlock. If they really want the money, they'll try and find a way to get it. If they just want out of the agreement, I think this is a good answer. So people have read the letter. I would accept comments at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
Is there any possibility of, the letter says agreement to expire no later than December 1, December 31 of 2020. So is that because they're voting in '19, they get that whole calendar year? Because isn't it a two-year?
It's two years. So they're voting today, that would, the final resolution would be December 31, 2021. We're saying drop your request for $160,000 and we'll give you a year off that. We would amend section 7D that says it's a two-year out and give them a one-year out.
Is that the section D?
That's the amending of section 7D.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
To clarify, it doesn't matter. They could, either city could say at any time throughout the year, we don't want to do this anymore. It could have been in February, but the calendar doesn't start until the end of the year.
Okay.
That's why they're anxious to do it today because otherwise, if they wait till January 1st, it's 2022.
So and are we comfortable in that we can either come up with a new JPA with Ramsey or another city or start our own department in a year?
I am. Councilmember Brian, I haven't asked him about that, but.
I would say something's possible. I mean, we have our own trucks, we have our, we have trucks, we have firefighters, we have, you know, a maintenance budget in place already as long as.
We've got the operational costs covered in our budget and the administrative part, we haven't budgeted for per se, but we do have monies available that we had designated for something else fire-related that can cover that startup cost, we believe, of what this would be. So we think in good faith, we can do something within a year. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, do I understand, are you tending toward starting our own fire department? Or are we tending toward wanting to make a partnership again with another city?
As it says in the letter, this would give Nowland time to research our options moving forward. We have
So you don't have.
Three cities that have expressed interest in joining with us on a JPA.
Okay.
Ramsey, at their last fire board meeting, indicated that they may be a fourth city that wants into that discussion. And we have had a number of discussions on just forming our own department. So we have potentially four options, five options.
And so how will we come to the conclusion of what, I mean, is this the council going to do this or is this something with the firefighters that it will be?
We will work with staff and present options to the council.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah, the firefighters will definitely want to have their input, but this will be something that the council will have to agree on.
Okay.
There would be a presentation with options, financial options, structural options, a long-term consequence. It'll be similar to what we did years ago when we contracted with the sheriff. We looked at what would it take to form our own police department, what would it take to partner with St. Francis, Ramsey, other cities, and what would it be to partner with the sheriff?
Okay.
So we explored all those options, gave cost and benefit analysis, and then figured out the most reasonable thing in this case was the sheriff's department. I would assume a similar investigation to start.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I'm just, I'd like to be assured that, and maybe you've already done this, that our attorney has looked at this and that there are no loopholes in it that even though we agreed to this December 31, 2020, that they can't come back to us with the $161, that this satisfies all pieces that we're not going to spend the $161,000 and that we'll do something by December 2020.
Lori and I had an extensive meeting with the attorney the other day.
Okay.
And all of this is approved, directed by the attorney.
All right, that's.
It's got my name on it, but.
I just want to be, I mean, you know me.
Yeah, and.
I just want to know that.
What if the judge had known that's, I wouldn't have had to ask the question.
No, it's a good point. And he's not saying it won't keep us out of court.
Yeah.
But it's good faith effort. We believe, we understand what they really want and we'll know better when we give this to them.
Okay.
That being said, we have backup plans. Anything else? So I guess to make a motion that I proceed to communicate this, a specific letter to Kurt Ulrich, the city administrator of Ramsey, and we'll have a discussion at our fire board meeting on Tuesday. Council approval?
Another second? Hey, we'll second that.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Do we need to have a conversation on beginning to research options? Or to, I understand we're giving in with, we're, okay, giving in wrong, we're shortening the timeframe by a year. I just don't know how much time. Do we have enough time to get everything in place? Do we need to start any of this now? What plan of attack do we want to do for this? Is Lori ready for another challenge?
Yeah, really.
And how we want to proceed with that, bringing in consultants. I know that there are definitely, as I understand it, consultants where this is their consulting gig with getting other fires, getting new stations up and running, that kind of type of thing. Granted, we're not going to get a lot done between now and the end of the year, but I'm just throwing it out there.
You know, Lori, we haven't asked you to spend time on this yet. I think what we should authorize is Lori to at least investigate cost of a consultant to work with us on this. I will contact the league. I have a board meeting this week. They've also offered services on understanding JPAs and working with us on JPAs. So I can contact the league. If Lori you want to get an idea of what a consultant would cost us. And the idea that we want to investigate is what's a healthy JPA that's out there that we can model a potential JPA with and then secondarily forming our own department. And we can, and then again, this to me would be a workshop come January. I would be willing to work with Lori on preparing that workshop. If that's the council's, it's council's approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I agree that you and I would think, Dan also, because he's been part of these.
The fire board.
The fire board, that you would be the two that would work with Lori going forward on this in addition to the direction to Lori as a consultant.
Is Dan interested?
Sounds like an interesting challenge.
Okay.
Not that I have anything else going on right now. You're my backup for the watershed, Linda.
Okay. Just give me a call.
As long as it's not 45, right?
Yeah, not 45. In eight months, 45 meetings. I wouldn't have to say no to that. I was really impressed, though.
All right, so. Is that enough direction? You want a motion, Lori?
That's enough direction for me.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I second.
You are adjourned.
I think it, we should send it to him and then discuss it next week.
Yeah. Sign this out, please.
Go ahead, Kay, we're living right now.